You know, man.
I was about to say, that's what you said.
Wait till I leave today.
Yeah, I want to break something up.
But you ready back there? You about ready? Okay. Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Vice Mayor Fair. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you hear me, fathers? We gather here to conduct business for the people. We ask that you be with us, Lord, and guide us in our decisions, that they may delight in your accord, that they may be wise decisions that benefit all, and that we may continue to serve you in oneness and unity under Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Zach. Hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated September 23rd, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitor or citizens with any praise or grievance. Communications from the mayor, I've got a few things, but first, we have a proclamation that I asked Councilman Gann to read in regards to Red Ribbon Week.
Whereas Anderson County, like hundreds of other counties across the country, has felt the devastation and consequence of substance abuse, misuse, as it has risen to crisis levels, and whereas the ASAP Coalition and the ASAP Youth Ambassadors have been working in Clinton and throughout Anderson County to increase knowledge, reduce access, and encourage a drug-free lifestyle, and whereas the Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the I Am One campaign promoted by ASAP of Anderson symbolizes the role each of us can play to have the greatest impact on the crisis, to be proactive against substance abuse in our community, and whereas success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to substance misuse prevention are imperative, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Clinton do hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Clinton, Tennessee, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, service organizations, religious and educational institutions to participate in the Red Ribbon Week activities throughout that time, wear and display red ribbons, making a visible statement that we strongly, we are strongly committed to a drug-free Clinton and proclaim I am one, who can play a vital role in preventing substance abuse in my community. This proclamation adopted this 28th day of October, 2019.
Hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Larry. I have a few things that I'd like to share. First of all, the Halloween event yesterday was fantastic. About 3,000 JB on that, and want to thank you for what you did, and also your staff in the back, the ones that got the free lunch on Friday. Missed out on that by about 15 minutes. But no, seriously, appreciate that. Some really good comments on Facebook as far as just, you know, these are the type of events that make a downtown, a small town like Clinton makes it special, and it was a special event for a lot of kids and adults yesterday. I want to thank you for that. Also, this is the time of the year where we, where I nominate the grand marshal for our parade. What is that? Is that December 6th?
Seventh.
Seventh at 6 o'clock, Saturday.
Yes.
And I would like to nominate Joe Rainey for our grand marshal. For those that don't know Joe, Joe's been a longstanding community activist, and he was a dentist for a long time in the community, been involved in a lot of boards. I know he was on ACDA when it was, when it first was formed. He's been on Election Commission, he's very active in his church, he's just, he's just a very well-respected, and I feel like a very much-loved person in town that needs to be recognized. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Last thing I'd like to talk about, you know, we talked about the senior center last month as far as me approaching the commission to offer the armory, if they would like that, for the senior center. Before the meetings, I had talked with Roger a little bit, because I had an idea as far as, you know, our building, the armory is our building, and it's probably been the most neglected building that we have in the city, which is neither here nor there, but I was thinking if we could have a partnership with the county, which we've done in the past, is we offer up to $100,000 in, focusing on the needs of the building, and those needs have already really been addressed or recorded, as far as replacing the roof, which we're going to have to do anyway, looking at the HVAC and make sure that's kept up, and things like that, that a landlord would do regardless of who the tenant is. Then the county would focus on their wants of the building, and that would be things probably like maybe refurbishing the bathrooms, refurbishing the kitchen that hasn't been in operation since the alternative school was there, and other things they would want to do, kind of spruce up, spruce up the building. Then if, you know, if there's more things on the list, then they can work on that as far as fundraising and things like that. But I think our commitment personally is going to be the same commitment if the senior center's there or not. I think we just need to keep the building, and I think we need to, really need to focus on that building too, and bring it up to something that we're proud of. You know, I think there was some discussion about the building wasn't up to ADA compliance, and to be honest with you, I've thought about this quite a bit. I'm kind of embarrassed that it's not up to ADA, because it's a government building, so to speak. It's been around for, Lord, how many years, Bill? 70 years? And, you know, there's a lot of seniors that use that regardless if it's the center or not during the fair time, and I don't think it'd cost a whole lot to bring that up, because it's mostly the bathrooms, I think, and the entryways. But anyway, that's neither here nor there, that could be discussed later on. But I would ask to, if I can get a motion for our commitment to offer up to $100,000 to focus on the needs of the building, while the county contributes up to $100,000 to focus on the wants of the building for a senior center.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be honest with you. I was approached by several citizens, and then all of a sudden I hear from the media and on social media that we have committed to $100,000.
I didn't, I never committed. I proposed.
I, I won't disagree with you of that, but the question came to me, have y'all discussed this? And I said, no, it's not been mentioned in council. It's not been discussed at all. And I, you know, I have a problem with that. If we're going to make commitments, I think as a council, we need to discuss those and put those on the table and deal with them as they come up. I don't want to do things on the back end. You know, I'm not going to be in favor of $100,000 commitment until I know what that is for. I'm just not going to write a check for $100,000 and say, this is for whatever we need there. I think we need to have a delineation of what we're spending $100,000 for.
Well, let me, let me answer that, and I respect what you're saying. Things were happening pretty fluid during that time. I know there was going to be another offer as far as the location of a senior center, and I know there's some needs that need to be addressed for that building, and I talked to Roger, said, you think this would be okay? And he agreed that, he thought I was going down the right path, but I knew that I'd have to come to the council to approve that. I was just trying to, trying to think outside the box as far as what we, what we need to do to make this, to make this attractive for the commission to use this for a senior center. But my point is, we've already got money set aside for the roof. We're going to have, the things I'm talking about, we're going to have to do anyway. We're going to have to redo the roof, and that's, that's the bulk of that $100,000. I didn't say exactly $100,000, I said up to $100,000. So it's whatever we deem that we need to do as a city, as from a need standpoint for that building, we're going to use that money towards. HVAC is another, we might not need to replace it, we just need to repair it.
Where is the roof? I mean, like, how many years out are we on a roof? I mean, no doubt it needs to be replaced at that point or time, and I'm not just for patching it here and there. Let's fix it. Like, we, we've had a history recently, most recently, if something tears up, we try our very best to fix it.
Right. How many are we answering all these questions? A couple of things. As the mayor said, and I was trying to find on my computer, didn't have time, but the only concurred that is right, the, when we did the capital outlay budget this past budget cycle, we did put, and I think it's been in there a couple of years actually, so this was not the first cycle, because we knew this was coming, we put $100,000 in there for improvements to the armory, just like we do other facilities, because we knew it was needing a roof. We actually got a roof estimate about a year and a half ago, it was right at $80,000, so you can probably figure on a little more right now at this time, just inflation going up. So actually, that money has already been approved in our capital budget during our budget process last spring, so that money's already been approved. Specific items, as Coach Gann is talking about, we don't have yet. I'll be honest, I've not been in that building probably in over a year. I didn't make it to the fair this year, I was out of town, so it's probably been last fair, the last time I've been in it. But I have scheduled with an architect and engineer, a walk-through, and with Rome State's permission, a walk-through this Tuesday, and we're going to ask, I invited the county mayor to go with me and her building, Roger Lloyd's going with us, and we will do a walk-through, and we'll go ask them to give us a rough estimate on repairs, and also bringing it up to any ADA standards. Now usually, when we do repairs to facilities, that's when we upgrade, the mayor's question, ADA. When we did repairs to this building the last two summers, or last winter and summer, that's when we brought it up to ADA standards. Anytime we do any major renovations, that's when we bring it up to ADA standards. We as a city have not did any renovations to the National Guard Armory since it was given back to us as a facility. When the National Guard gave it back to us, we pretty much, within a couple of years, that's when we leased it to the Anderson County School System for their alternative school. Now, they did do a major renovation to use it for an alternative school, and I think they were there 20-plus years? 20 years that they used it, and they did several upgrades during that time. When they moved out, it was only empty, I think less than a year, then we were able to get Rome State to move in. Now, Rome State has done very little with it, but in the contract, as in, I think, all the contracts I have done with these facility users, we put in it that any major capital improvements to the facility, such as roof, heat and air units, will negotiate between us and the leasing on how much and who will make those upgrades. And usually, what we try to do is some kind of compromise, like we do with the city schools also, some type of 50-50. Sometimes we provide the labor, they provide the material. Sometimes it's just 50-50 cost, so that's why we put some money in it. We had been in talks with Rome State last year about helping replace the roof and heat and air, and that's why we only put $100,000 in there, thinking that they would supply some of it. But they're talking about moving out into the new facility at I-75 Industrial Park. Of course, I don't think they'll want to spend any money, so we're kind of...
So is the roof, I mean, are we, are we six months out? Are we two years out? I mean, is it leaking? I mean, I know the money's there, and I know we need to repair it, and a lot of times you want to repair it before you get a lot of damage.
Councilman, I don't, until we do the walk-through Wednesday, I don't know. That's why we want to do the walk-through and just see what kind of shape it is again.
I mean, I...
I've not had any complaints from Rome State, but it's a...
I think it's our building, and I think that irregardless, we will take care of it. We want to, we need to, we're supposed to, but I'd like to know specifically, you know, is half the air conditioning working, half of them not working? Just kind of, if we had more of a specific game plan, whether seniors go up there, they don't go up there, we still are obligated to take care of a building, but I'd like to, I'd like to be more definitive with my numbers, I guess.
Well, again, to your point though, we're not, we might not have anything, and, I mean, from an example standpoint, we're just saying, we're going to commit up to $100,000. Not saying we're going to spend $100,000.
Which has already been approved. Which, what I'm saying, it's already been committed and approved in the capital outlay budget.
Yeah. I mean, it's out there.
So that's the money you're going to use?
That's the money we put aside.
It's not new money, somewhere else.
No, no, it's in the capital outlay.
But if we decide we're going to do that, and we bid it out, those items will have to be brought back to council for approval, yes.
Yeah. And yeah, I think y'all, we've been together 10 years. I mean, I wouldn't do anything purposely to overstep my authority, but I did want to put that out there, because I felt strongly that a good partnership between the city and county, that this was a good thing to go for. I mean, I knew that we'd have to go back and talk about it like we are today.
So before we spin this, there will be a specific delineation of what we're going to spend?
Absolutely. I think, you know, I think we start with a, with a walk-through and coming up with a detailed list.
And kind of prioritize things.
Other repairs, and what has to be done, and, you know, then I think there's going to be some things that if the county does decide they want to put a senior center there, that may be their responsibility, such as commercial kitchens and stuff like that. I don't, I don't know what all they're talking, me and Mayor Frank have talked a couple of times about it, but just due to our schedules and other projects going on, we have not met in detail, but like I said, we will start that Wednesday afternoon.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I went back and forth on this. I guess when I found out about it, it wasn't at the county commission meeting, it was a rerun to county commission meeting, which was probably four weeks after everybody else heard about it. And I would, I guess I would wish someone had called. I spent a month at the armory for the last 20 years. If anybody knows what's wrong with that armory, there's about four of us that have to make 18 to 25 repairs to the armory before it's ready for the fair. If it wasn't for one dusty carol, the last two years, I don't know if we'd have opened the armory up. It would have been 120 degrees with 300 people inside. If, yeah, the roof, there's 15 leaks in there, we repaired four of them, just because it's in the main room. There's some classrooms back there that the tiles have fallen, they're still down over three years period of time. I don't know what your contract is with Rome State. Those three classrooms, it's not being used, tile's popping up, because 205 Main has a lot of mold because there was a leak they didn't know anything about. This is a leak, and three years in the making, and there haven't been any repairs made whatsoever to those three classrooms. Now, they're not, we don't use them for the fair, they're back where the, I guess where they have classes, and some of the directors have their classrooms and their offices. We have hired, I guess the last three years, we've hired two different people to work the week of the fair to do nothing but keep the bathrooms unclogged. They'll clog up every 30 minutes because they can't handle the load. That's just the drainage, I'm sure, is very minimum, what the codes are today, as far as bathroom drains. It does not handle water or flushing the commotes, either one. And we do get by barely, but there are 50,000 people come through for six periods, six days period of time. I just don't want another 205 Main. I want this, I want this thing combed through, I want everything bought up. If, if we have to do the roof, the heating and air is not going to last, if it lasts another fair, I doubt it. If you do the heating and air, you need to replace all the windows, and there's approximately 90 windows in the armory. Even if you get a real good deal, it's still 90 windows. So, I don't know. $100,000 in a world of commercial remodeling probably don't last two weeks. I'm thinking we're going to be talking bigger numbers, you know?
Did you say something, the windows been already been replaced?
When the schools did their remodel, they did replace all the windows, except the ones in, I guess, the drill room, the big room, and they, they wasn't replaced, and now, like I said, I'm not sure what kind of shape the other ones are in.
There was a good idea as far as the windows, sidetracking Mr. Steve Quinter, when he talked about the fair and about, about the needs of the building, he brought up a good idea, the top windows, to block those in, and even put a lower roof or ceiling in the, in the main gym area, just to help with energy efficiency. I'm not saying we're going to be able to, or the county's not going to be able to do everything at one time, but if we have a plan, and they do a fundraising after that, they can, they can knock out a lot of these, what I call wants, for the building.
So is the county really interested? I hear...
They are.
Certain things, I mean, so they...
Rome State's not going to leave till early 2021, and they haven't started construction yet.
That's about 18 months out.
Yeah, what I've been told is about probably spring of 2021, when Rome State will be ready to move. And then you get the other, other thing out there, which most of you know, that the, most of JC Park was given to the city back in the early '30s by the Anderson County Fair and Stock Association, and due to that, we have a commitment, contractual commitment, that the fair association gets JC Park back for three weeks out of the year to use, so that armory would be back to the fair association for three weeks, and they pretty much get the, get the whole park. We pretty much, besides the swimming pool, turn the keys over to them for those, those three weeks, and then they have to turn it back over to us as they found it. Or better shape, so that's...
I think the discussions we've had on that, recommendations is...
So has there been discussions with the fair about that, fair board about that?
I've talked to, I've talked to Steve about that, yes.
I hadn't talked to the ones that done the work, and that's the one you need to talk to.
Well, ETS got my responsibility.
Steve comes by, and he picks up a check, and that's about it.
Mayor Matt, weigh in.
But anyway, my point on that is, during that three weeks, we got, you know, the county's got 15 schools that are empty, of course, we got the community center, that could be, that could be worked around. Yes.
So, so everybody understands, the money has previously been approved for, in the capital outlay. The city has an obligation for the maintenance and upkeep of the building in some respects. Any commitments previously made to, to the county government were proposals, subject to council approval anyway. Senior citizen center benefits Clinton residents. That's a fact. Having it located strategically in Clinton would be beneficial to Clinton residents. Tax dollars, whether it's city or county, are going to go to address this issue one way or the other. So I think our ability to work to find an economical solution that's in the, that's in the benefit of all, in benefit of the seniors, in benefit of our tax dollars, and using it in an efficient manner, and if we can work together, it's a big if, but if we can't work together, which it sounds like there's a decent proposal or idea out there, I think that I embrace it. Now, I highly respect everyone's opinion here, and I understand the concern about how maybe this all sort of rolled itself out, but I want to think, big picture, is what we're trying to do is we're trying to serve our citizens, and in particular, our senior citizens, and we're trying to, to efficiently use a building that we know is going to be empty in 12 to 18 months. And so I think we got a lot of good things, and we should focus, we should keep our attention on the details, as Councilman McBride and Councilman Gann are doing, that's great, but I think we also need to focus too, on big picture, we've got an opportunity to do something really special here.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Guys, just one other comment. If this doesn't go through, as Vice Mayor did say, we do not need that building to set empty. If it doesn't go through the senior center, we need to be thinking about a other plan for something for that facility.
Next, community reports. City School Board report, Kelly Johnson.
Those things are sticking in your eye.
That's a little close, it's a little uncomfortable. I have a couple of Clinton City updates for you tonight, and then I also have a request that's going to require action on your part, so I'll save that for last. A couple of things that are going on in Clinton City Schools. I honestly cannot remember if last month I shared with you the good news about Jenna Sharp, so if this is a repeat, then I apologize. Did I share it last month? So she has been named the Regional East Tennessee Principal of the Year. So out of the 21 districts in the East Tennessee region, she received that award, and will be going on with eight other contestants. One is dropped out, so now that becomes seven contestants, who will be competing for the actual Tennessee Principal of the Year award. She will find out at a lead conference, which is a statewide conference next week, next Tuesday night, the winner will be announced there, so regardless of whether she wins the state level or not, the fact that she was competing against larger systems, every principal in Knox County, every principal in Blount County, you're looking at all the East Tennessee region, that is just a wonderful, wonderful testament to the quality administrators we have at Clinton City Schools, so we're certainly proud of her. Also, I wanted to let you know, we've been talking a little bit about Clinton Elementary School, and I wanted to let you know something that is on the horizon, that I'll be coming back next month with more information regarding this, but the school board did, in our October meeting, vote unanimously to do a expansion of Clinton Elementary School. And what it would entail is four classrooms and four what we call intervention rooms, and so I wanted to give you kind of the history of what led us to this, led us to this decision and moving forward, what we know and what we don't know. As you know, Clinton Elementary School has been busting at the seams for the past couple of years, which is a good thing. We've had to add a sixth grade classroom. For many years, we functioned with two sixth grade classes, and then enough students are staying with us now for sixth grade, where we had to add a third grade classroom. We had no more classrooms left, and so we turned the computer lab and took the official computer lab away and turned that into a classroom, and made our old technology office, which is really supposed to be an office space, that is now our computer lab. While we do the best we can with that, and it does connect to the library, so there are some advantages to that, it is not near big enough for a classroom of children to be in there. We also, our English language learner teacher, she came on board, and we are required to serve our ELL students by state law an hour a day, and so we have a full-time ELL teacher at Clinton Elementary. We don't have a classroom for her right now, so we were forced to turn a staff kitchen in the west wing, and that is now her classroom. And so she, her classroom is in there with a refrigerator and a microwave, and she has to share that space with a teacher. And then state law also requires, about four or five years ago, we have to participate in an intervention program called Response to Intervention, and so each child, for 45 minutes a day, we look at, say kindergarten, and we look at each child and where their areas of strength, and what kind of holes, academic holes and skill deficits we need to plug, and we, we kind of put the children into different groups, and we pull all of our teaching assistants and all of our teachers for one 45-minute time, and offer small group intense intervention or enrichment instruction to every student. So obviously, we have to have places in the classroom for those interventions to take place. Currently... classroom for those interventions to take place. Currently, at Clinton Elementary School, we are doing those in hallways. We are doing them on the stage in the auditorium, which you know echoes, and the lighting is not really conducive for that. We're doing them in the cafeteria, and then we're also doing them in the elevator hallways before you enter the elevators on both the first and second floor. So those are really not conducive spaces for our children to be participating in learning activities. So Scott Ray and I called, MHM is the architect that, firm that we have been working with, called them out, and they walked the building with us, and frankly, we are about at core capacity for Clinton Elementary School. And that means when you're looking at logistically what the cafeteria can hold and how we can feed all of the students in that amount of time, you're looking at, you know, what the library can circulate, what the gym can hold, we are about at core capacity. So about all we're able to do is four classrooms and four response to intervention rooms. What this would allow is it would allow us down the road to have some expansion room. For our, our lower grades, we must keep it a one to twenty overall average ratio. Once we get to fourth, fifth and sixth grade, we can have a one to twenty-five ratio, so we have a little bit more room to play with. But we are right now at our BEP. We are right there on the edge, and so we, we just need to make plans to continue to, to improve and to have room. One of the things about school systems, you can't wait for the kids to come, because you, if, if they come and we don't have a place to put them, we're looking at buying portable buildings, which is not anything, I do not want to put children in portable buildings. So with that said, the estimated cost is going to be one point five million for that project. It would go, I have the layout of what the architects have laid out for us that you can see, along with the estimates from the architect breaking down all of the prices, with the contingency prices and all of the contracting fees and everything are worked into this. The actual construction cost is estimated to be a little bit above one point three six. So where we are right now is the geo survey. We have given the approval for the geo survey to occur just so that we make sure that we are not encountering any unforeseen things such as rocks or something that would significantly increase the price. But you can see what we would be doing is on the West Wing, which was the addition that was added in two thousand, we would be coming out kind of into a T shape, adding four classrooms within four RTI rooms. So what it would do is you can see in the map that it's going to take a little bit of our driveway and a little bit of the parking right there at Clinton Elementary School. So we'd have to move the driveway over just a little bit. We would lose one row of parking there, but that is what Marshall Street is for, which I'll give you an update on in just a second. So we'll be doing the additional parking in Marshall Street that will make up, will make up for that. So next month, we will be going to, the board kind of, we've really thought about some different ways that we could finance this. We are sitting on a fairly good fund balance, but we do still have some debt that we need to get paid off. And so the school board at this point, to be transparent, is leaning towards using five hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance to, to initially pay for some of the costs. And then we have received information about a ten-year loan that we could get at approximately two point six percent, and borrowing a million dollars for that project. And what that would allow us to do is Scott and I have, we agree on the philosophy that you borrow money for growth and development, but you pay cash for maintenance. And so we don't want to tap our fund balance and put us in an unsafe position where if we needed to do a refor, we had some sort of catastrophe where a boiler needed to be replaced, that's going to put us in a unhealthy situation. And so what borrowing this million dollars would allow us to do is we certainly would get it paid off faster than ten years, but it would at least give us some flexibility if we happen to hit a recession. Frankly, Governor Lee is not supporting education quite like Haslam did, so we don't know what the future holds with state funding and what kind of increases that we are going to see there. So this has not been voted on yet by the school board, but I wanted to be transparent with what's coming down on the horizon, and then I should be able to come back to you next month with more information regarding this project. So kind of timeline, what we're thinking of is once, once we get, obviously, school board approval, I come back to you. We, we get some of these decisions made, then we would go ahead and begin construction, and hopefully that would be ready to open up the school year for next year with the majority of the loud construction taking place over the summer when students are not in the building. So before I go on to my next update, any questions regarding that?
With this particular plan like this, and I mean, I know you can't give us an exact forecast, but if you were to forecast, are we going to be pretty good, you think, for five to eight years, or is this just a Band-Aid for two to four years, or you got any thoughts on that, or is there-
You know, I have no ideas.
Is there any way to, to project that, or-
There, there really is no, you know, no way to project. We, we are continuing to grow. We are, we are turning away transfers left and right because our priority is city kids. And as we're looking at that Milton Hill section growing, we're looking at possible annexation, we really have no idea. And that's a question that I have asked the chamber and multiple people when you're looking at these new subdivisions. Is there a formula or some, some sort of this is the price of the house, these are the typical families that move in, this is your projected number of kids that could be coming? And I can't, I don't think that exists. So honestly, we do not know. I know that when they built the apartments back behind Walgreens, we really expected a huge increase in student enrollment. We just didn't see it. What we found is a lot of existing Clinton people who already came to us moved to those apartments. We enrolled a few, but we did not see quite the increase that we thought we would see. So it's really hard to determine, but honestly, whether we see growth or not, we could use that space right now. So that's kind of where we are.
Call up with Jim's comment. It just seems like for four classrooms, that's a pretty pricey. I mean, it might be good to overlook the whole, the whole school, if, if, you know, thinking long-term. It just seems kind of pricey for four classrooms.
School construction is very pricey. And, and Scott has done the analysis with per-square footage, and it's right on target with, with school construction. Unfortunately, school construction. And this does not include the things that will go in the classroom. This is just for the structure, but it does not include the smart boards, the, the teacher desks, the student desks, and all of the-
Things like that you would pay just out of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any other questions on that before I move on to parking update?
Ken, do you know, or Scott can answer later, or maybe Gil, what is the, the school's debt? Where are we with school's debt?
I've got that.
Do you? Okay.
We currently, right now, our total debt is one point three four five.
What is the general fund balance for the school?
Our general fund balance, our general fund balance, unaudited, is four point three. So if you take away our, what we owe, then we have about three million, but you have to keep in mind that our payroll is about six hundred thousand dollars a month, and we need to be keeping four to five months of payroll in our fund balance. So while it sounds like our fund balance is super healthy, it's really just getting to a point where Scott's feeling at least comfortable with it. So we don't want to put that back in a position that makes us feel uncomfortable.
Yeah, because we've been up here with that. We don't like that.
No.
The one point three four five million, what's the, when's the maturity on those type things? I mean-
So we are still paying on the, actually, we're still paying on the West Wing, which is unfortunate, and that was, you know, history long before any of us were standing here. But it got refinanced so many times that we are actually now replacing HVA systems, and we're actually replacing things that we're still paying for, which is an unfortunate place to be. But on the West Wing, we still owe a million, approximately a million dollars with seven years remaining. On the South Clinton Capital Project loan where we had to fix the walls a few years ago, we still owe three hundred and fifty-three thousand with six years remaining. And then the other two loans are smaller loans, but those are energy efficiency loans with literally no interest. So those, that, one of those loans is fifty-four thousand, one of them's ninety-six thousand, but those are basically interest-free.
Kelly, who's, who, who are we speaking with about the loan? I was just curious.
We are going through the Bond Debt Service.
Bond.
Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then how far in the process are we as far as thinking about getting requests for proposals, and who, who are we already thinking about? An architect or a construction company? I mean, how, how far down that line are we?
So MHM would be the architect, and then, but then as far as the contracting, that would be RFP'd out, but we would have to get approval from school board and you all to move forward before we would be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Any other questions for Kelly? Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, second of all, just to update you on the parking, we are in, we are in conversation at this point with Cozy Contractors, and we met with him, Scott and I met with him yesterday. He is currently working on an estimate for us that would involve turning the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot into all parking, and then going to take down the Gray House that is still standing. That would be demolished, and then from the Gray House to the end of the street, we would prep for parking.
So Wiggles and Giggles, is that that one lot on the corner?
Yes.
In the corner of Marshall.
Yes.
Okay. And then the Gray House, is that that next lot that's kind of long and narrow?
The Gray House, we, there's one right, there's Wiggles and Giggles, another small lot, and then there's one house that we do not own, that just has a driveway and then a house. And then the Gray House is right beside that.
Okay.
So there'll be a little stretch that is not developed.
Okay.
We're not going to develop that second lot that we own just because we want to make sure that we have water drainage appropriate.
Oh, okay.
So we're leaving that undeveloped.
So would it be develop that corner lot?
Correct.
And then skip over-
Yes.
One lot and a driveway and do the other lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So at this point, we're waiting on the estimates. We don't know if those are going to start off as gravel parking lots, and then down the road, we asphalt, or we might asphalt and completely do the Wiggles and Giggles and just prep the other and asphalt as money comes available.
I got one more question. Looking at this map right here, it's because it's just a good map. The schools own the Wiggles and Giggles. Do they own that next slender lot?
Yes.
Okay. Then the one that's got the little driveway and goes back and spreads out, do not own it?
We do not own.
Own the next one-
We own the rest of the street.
That you're talking about. So you own the other two out there there, too?
We own the rest of the street.
Okay.
So we own all of Marshall on the left, on the left side, if you're going down Marshall, except for one.
Except for that one lot, okay.
And then at this point, they are not interested in selling, which we respect that. Okay, so what I come to you tonight needing some, needing some action on is, as we look at Marshall, we have, we were contacted by the owner of 212 Marshall Street. She was ready to sell her, she was ready to sell her lot, and that is located on the right side of Marshall, where the upper playground is at Clinton Elementary School, directly behind the adjacent lot, right behind the playground. She offered and wanted to know if we were interested in purchasing that land and the house. And so Scott Ray negotiated a price of forty thousand dollars for the house and the piece of land. And so I think that is probably in your packet, Gil. So that, that map is in your, in your packet. So what we are requesting is the city, once again, to purchase that on our behalf with the, with the assurance that we will reimburse you for that purchase. What that will give us the ability to do is, back there is a wide open gate to where if an ambulance has to come in, that is how the ambulance comes in. And so that will actually be our property now that the ambulance is driving on to get access to, to the playground. And while that doesn't happen all the time, it usually does happen a couple of times a year with children who get injured on the playground. So that's just, since it's adjacent to the playground, that's a good piece of property for us to have at forty thousand dollars.
Here a motion for approval?
Move. Second.
Have a motion second. Any, any further discussion? So Kelly, I guess, looking at your crystal ball, that I guess after you purchased this piece of property, there's really two more properties you'd like to have. The person that's definitely want to, to, to sell it this time, and probably one more house on the other side that we're talking about.
Correct. And that's it.
That's going to be it.
That's it.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That's it. And that's just for future growth. We don't know what, we don't know what's going to happen in the town of Clinton, and we have to be proactive and make sure that our kids are taken care of. So, you know, we may, we may not need to. But Marshall just, that's, that's a good piece for us. It's all adjacent to the school, so we're crazy not to take advantage of it if we can, if we're able to.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, I was loaded this time. I'll come back hopefully with not as much next month. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. It's, you have a budget amendment that would require approval. The only thing is in the Federal Projects Fund, there's no budget amendment for general purpose or the Cafeteria Fund. The budget in the Federal Projects Fund decreases our expenditures a little over fifty thousand dollars. I guess my only note would be, I don't want you to think that our federal grants are decreased by fifty thousand dollars. The federal grants this year compared to the prior year decreased only eight thousand. Every year, we have a carryover amount that we can carry over. One year, we may spend a little more, and we have less to carry over. One year, we may spend a little less, and we have more to carry over. And that's what resulted in this fifty thousand dollar decrease in budgeted expenditures. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Here a, here a motion for approval of budget amendment number two.
Go move. Second.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Any questions on the financial statements, while, okay. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
I had a quick question for, for Kelly. I don't know if we covered this last, last meeting, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but our, our principal at Clinton Elementary School, Jenna Sharp, was named Forty Under Forty by Knox Biz.
She was. She was, and I shouldn't have-
And that's sort of a big deal?
That is a big deal.
Do you want to just address that real quick?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
I'd love to. So not only was Jenna Sharp the Prince, East Tennessee Principal of the Year, but a week later, she found out that she was nominated and accepted into Knoxville's Forty Under Forty. And so she will be appear in, is it Knoxville, what's the name of the magazine?
It's Knox Biz.
Knox Biz Magazine. So she actually completed her interview with that on Friday, and so she will go to that reception. And if you recall, we had some of our students, actually Zach's children, were Knoxville's Twenty Under Twenty. So we are blessed to have some Twenty Under Twenties. We have some Forty, Forty Under Forties, and so another good recognition for her and for our school system. Thank you for reminding me of that.
You what? Anything else?
Before we move on to the Regional Planning Commission report, I just want to let you know, I, I'm going to have to slide out in just a few minutes. I want to leave everything in good hands with Vice Mayor, but I have to go pick up my mom at the airport. I don't want my mom to be staying, staying around, so I apologize ahead of time. But when you see me leave, you know why. So, Mr. Gann?
All right. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on Monday, October fourteenth. Applicant Adriana Godet Armstrong requesting rear setback to ten feet for residential addition located at 106 Channel Way. They're replacing a deck with a screened-in porch, and it is consistent with other structures along the way. And after discussion, this was moved to carry. Number two, applicant Charles Anman Carolyn Jones requesting rear setback to one foot for residential accessory structure located at 206 Jason Hovater Way, property's zoned R2. And after discussion and, and clear, basically signed clearance from neighbors, that was also was moved to pass. Then the Clinton Regional Planning Commission, applicant Ned Ferguson requesting site plan approval for property located at 205 Lamar Avenue, and the applicant chose not to move forward of this project, is submitted, so that was withdrawn. Applicant Delta Apparel Merritt Construction requesting site plan review for property located at 370 JD Yarnell Industrial Parkway, property's zoned M2. That request was granted contingent upon submit, submittal and approval of drainage plans. This, this frequently happens where there's issues about drainage, and until those are concluded, the, the approval is contingent upon those getting into our department. Applicant Thomas Hicks Construction requesting bond setting for Frank Price Landing located at Frank Price Boulevard, property's zoned R3, and that was put on hold because the applicant is waiting on a third estimate for the bond. Then number three, Hollingsworth Property Consultants requesting annexation of property located at North Charles G. Severs Boulevard at Sinking Springs Road. This is for annexation of a subdivision that's under current development. The annexation resolution and the plan of services were reviewed by the members, and after discussion, it was the Planning Commission voted to recommend the annexation request and plan of services to Clinton City Council. And then fourth, connected with that, Hollingsworth Property Consultants requesting preliminary plat approval for the village at Heinz Creek located at North Charles G. Severs Boulevard at Sinking Springs Road. And once again, there were issues that Mr. McGrew had to help us with as far as drainage and, and on some of the lots and everything. And the Plan Commission voted to approve this subject to those being addressed to the satisfaction of the city and city council approving annexation. And then fifth, the Spire Foundation requesting preliminary site plan for Spire Park. This is the preliminary site plan for Phase Two, and this was approved by the Plan Commission subject to all environmental regulations. And then also, we- And then also, we, as in your packet, we approved a P1 district zoning draft. We asked Mr. Barrett how many of these were around, and he wasn't really sure, because there's not that many private developments that are regulated by a governmental entity. The closest thing we could think of was perhaps, this puts us in, in high cotton with Biltmore as a private development governed by a governmental body. So this is, this is brand new to us, and we tried to structure it, you have it in your packet, the P1 district, to help aspire and at the same time to, to deal with anything that might come up in, in future park developments. Also, in, in discussion with the downtown development and with others, one of the things that has frequently come up is the appearance of some of our buildings inside the city. And one of the questions that we have been looking for, and we certainly looked for your input into this, is how far do we want to extend the B2 zone? And in doing this, what are we looking for as far as appearance guidelines in that B2 zone? So if you have any ideas about that, I'm sure the downtown development and these other groups would, would love to know, how far do we want to extend this and, and what do we want to put as far as restrictions as appearance?
I think, I think I would look at you guys to, to give us the recommendations as far as how far we wanted to, to go out.
Give me, give me an example. What are you talking about? B2 zone, where's that at?
B1 is downtown.
Correct.
B2 is the surrounding area.
Like?
Well, it's, I'm not exactly sure exactly where it extends to now, but it could extend off K into South Clinton. It could extend as far up as perhaps Weaver Street, or even further there. As far as the high school.
What?
It's the general commercial zone.
Yes, it's the general commercial zone.
B1 is limited to downtown.
Correct, okay.
B2 is pretty much the commercial zone, and it's, what do we want to consider our commercial zone? Do we want to extend that to South Clinton? How far down Oak Ridge Highway? They may not be in the city limits, but they're still, they still could be B2. And what regulations do we want to impose on them to fit within the guidelines of what, what we want to see as far as the city of Clinton?
Is there something that's, that's prompting this question?
There have been discussions about some recent constructions and the appearance, not, not bring necessarily.
One thing, I've not got to leave, but one thing I wanted to bring up is, I think the, I think we need to look at the exterior of the buildings.
That's.
I think, I think the, the metal siding on buildings, I think we've kind of evolved past that in our, in our business district, that maybe just do a brick or a stone or, or whatever, stucco if you will, hardy board, but I think that, I think the, it's the Dollar General. I think I've heard some complaints about just to have that metal siding. I don't know if that's, I think the only thing that puts our city in a good light as far as the beauty of, that we, that we have to offer, and you go buy a metal building.
My understanding is that same businesses that had different looking developments in other areas, and because we didn't have it within our, our guidelines, they could do pretty much whatever.
They could do whatever. Okay. That, an example is what I wanted.
Yeah.
That's a good example.
And then also, let me share with you, the next scheduled meeting will be held on November, to be held on November 11th has been changed because of Veterans Day holiday to November 14th at 10:00 a.m. I know we're, we've got voting on annexation such. Any questions? 10:00 a.m., yes.
Any questions for Councilman Gann?
I've got Mr. McGrew and Ms. Hollingsworth here to answer any questions that you might have.
We'll probably take that up during the.
Right.
Adoption of resolutions. All right, CUB report. CUB met, I think I'll be giving that one. CUB met October 10th at CB Building. I just wanted to note that due to the long-term partnership credit negotiated largely due to CUB's leadership with TVA and with cooperation from the TVA President Jeff Lyash, we were able to have TUB, TVA pay Cub $115,189 and 11 cents. So it's a, it's a contract, not have to have our general manager go into more depth, but it's something that's been ongoing since 1999, when these negotiations between TVA, the TVPPA, TVA Utilities started. It was renegotiated in, again, in August 2017, but between, I think, that TVPPA leadership, which we have a large voice on, we were able to negotiate a deal with TVA that was very beneficial to the, the utilities. And I thought, I'm happy to take any questions about the report that you have in front of you that was included in your packet. All right, any other board or committee reports?
We don't have, there's not a report in there.
There's not, not the financials?
Uh-uh.
Well, we'll get that provided to you. It's, that's fine. We'll, we'll get it provided to you and, and updated, amended. Any other, Larry, do you have anything on any other business?
We didn't have one last month either, did we?
I just get them randomly.
That's, I used to send those to you, have them sent to me and send, so yeah.
We'll address that. Yeah, thank you.
Might just mention, and some of you may have seen this news on the, on the medias, the Clinton 12 were recently awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award by the Knoxville Urban League, the Whitney Young Award for their 1956 activities. Quite a, quite an honor for, for those, those people.
Yeah, yeah. Five, five of the Clinton 12 were there to receive the reward.
That's, that's great publicity for the city.
It's a very high honor, very deserving. All right, general government report, City Manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to jump around just a little bit. We don't have very much tonight. To the Recreation Department, surplus vehicle. We have removed the following vehicle from service and recommending that it be declared surplus and placed on GovDeals website for disposal. 2009 Ford F-150 pickup with 195,231 miles that has transmission failure.
So move.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One other thing, if I defer to Gil, I know the mayor spoke about the Halloween trick-or-treat yesterday. Would like to give special thanks to a couple people, and two of them are here, Zach Rich and Taylor Huddleston, who's in the back of the room. They're two of the main ones that organized this event, along with Matt Harold that works here at City Hall, and Jordan Scarborough, our monitor at the community center, and the maintenance staff at the center that did a great job of putting this together. Like I said, we had almost 3,000 people attend. Last year was the first year of it. It grew considerably this year. I know talking with them today, they already kind of planned a next year, some things they, they picked up yesterday that can been done better. So they did a great job. Both of them are, I want to say new employees. Taylor's been with us actually since she was 14 years old in a part-time capacity, but she's now a full-time employee. Zach's been with us, probably about a, or Zeke, I mean, has been with us about a year now. So they do a good job with us, though.
Would you stand and be recognized, please?
I'd like to defer to Gil for the financial.
I've got your financial report, revenue expenditures, when it's fairly early in the year. I want to mention to you the property tax. I know the county, I've had a couple of you ask me about the county getting all this extra money. While I can't address that, I can tell you that we don't have any extra money. I don't know how they budgeted, but we, I estimated an aggregate, a tax aggregate of And our actual came in $3,312 less than that number. So, you know, when I budget, I get estimates from the property system. I use past experience and what we've done, so I, I don't know if, I don't know how they came up with that, but I'm not aware of any extra money coming in, so, so don't go spending it yet.
Can't redeem our cereal boxes.
But we, we ended the year with about a ni, almost a 98% collection rate on our property tax, and we, I normally budget a 96% collection. So that kind of gives us a little bit of cushion too, so, and we're already collecting, I think we've collected over 400,000, I think, already in property tax.
Thank you, Gil. The next item is our health related insurance policy renewals. And kind of, I'm going to defer to Angela to go over that, and she's excited about doing that, but it'll give you just a little history on it. One thing I told you all a few months ago that we did, a little different this year. Back in the summer, we actually, for the first time in, in several years, first time as a tabby and city manager, we actually put our broker out to market. And we did RFPs on it, and we had probably seven or eight. And then I think we took the top three and actually brought them in and interviewed them, spent a whole day interviewing them. We did stay with Trinity Benefits, which we've been with, but we did feel like that they were giving us the best package, so that's who we did stay with. Then we went to market with them, and I'm going to turn it over to Angela, let her explain what we've done. We did stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield this year. They did come in under budget, very minor changes in our policy. She'll quickly go over them. Like I said, very minor, so it won't take, take much.
So our recommended for changes for the 2020 plan year is, on the health insurance, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the plan will remain the same. There was a 15% increase that was budgeted for the health insurance, and we negotiated an 8% premium increase. The only change that we'll have will be the health reimbursement arrangement, so the HRA amount covered by the city will decrease from 75% to 70%. This will shift additional costs to employees with higher usage, and currently employees are paying 25% after meeting their $500 deductible, and that will increase to 30% through the out-of-pocket max. So on the dental insurance, we've had one plan throughout, but that plan will now become a base plan, and we're looking at a premium increase of approximately $2,000 for the year. A dual option was added to the Delta Dental Plan, which will give the employees the opportunity for a buy-up plan, offering orthodontia and an increased annual maximum per member benefit of 1,500 instead of $1,000 per year. And employees will contribute towards that buy-up plan, $5.44 per month for single coverage and $16.74 per month for family coverage. There were no plan changes or premium increases for the vision, life insurance, or the teledoc. And then the voluntary plans to include a critical illness, accident, short-term disability, and long-term disability were moved to Trinity as well, so that way, all the benefits are centralized.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
So for the health insurance, you're looking at an increase of about $105,000.
Yes.
Correct. And the reason we changed the HRA once again, that's for the people that's using the benefit. That's, they're using most of the ones who have to pay a little more. And that changes, right now, the current maximum out-of-pocket per individual is $2,212.50. That takes it to $2,555. So it's still an excellent benefit.
Right. Any other discussion? Just quickly, I wanted to say, it's, it's a, it's a great plan. We budgeted 15% increase, we're able to come in at 8%, and that's significant, you know, to be able to beat that budget at, uh, projection. It's, it's a great benefit for our employees, and I hope they, they understand that, and, and it's one that, that they should be proud of, and the city ought to be proud that we, we provide our people. With that, all in favor say?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Vice Mayor.
All right, so we're on to the first reading of new ordinances. Ordinance number 645, which is the P1 zoning district regulations. Roger, do you have anything to say about that?
The only thing we had, the mayor, as he's gone, now had the question, wanted me to have an answer for him, was did the P1 zoning create any non-taxable, I guess, creation? And it does not, zoning does not create that. Any 501(c)(3) status would, but, but the, the, just zoning does not create that. So if there was anybody else had that question, zoning does not create, create any tax exempt status.
Okay. So we've got the, the ordinance, the, we take a motion on this bill, or do we take a roll? So do I hear a motion to move?
So move.
Have a motion to hear a second.
Say it.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Do we roll call here, Bill, or?
Roll.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamy?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farr?
Yes. Ordinance passes first reading. There are no second or final readings of ordinances. We'll move to adoption of resolutions. First off, this is the resolution number 786, the Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Matching Grant Program.
Vice Mayor, this is a 50/50 matching grant through Public Entity Partners, which is our insurance carrier. They provide these each years to cities, and what this is for is actually extra security cameras for our facilities. It's a total of an $8,000 grant.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamy?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farr?
Yes. Resolution passes on, resolution 787, which is the, says right, TOSHA program update?
That is our TOSHA program update, and what that is, we've had our representative actually contact with TOSHA. City has to appoint one, the one that has been, our contacts actually took employment, so we have to update that program. Angela Sylvester will be our new contact person, so we just have to update our program to submit. We have to have council approval to do so.
So move.
Say it.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamy?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farr?
Yes. Motion carries. Resolution number 788, the Village at Heinz Creek Annexation. City Manager?
Now this, even though it's in resolution form, and once again, the mayor's gone, by state law.
It's first reading.
It's by state law, it's a resolution, which most of our resolutions only has to be passed once, but because it's state law, annexation resolution has to be passed twice like an ordinance.
So we're?
So we're in the first reading?
Yes, it's first reading, yes.
First reading, which requires a second reading to pass.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion in favor of resolution?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Now this doesn't, the plan of services is the next one, which was there's some concern over, right? This 787?
Just annexation.
Not any concern, there's annexation, okay.
So can, can someone educate me as to the process of annexation? So what are the steps the city would take, and what are the, the obligations that each of these resolutions would, would bind the city?
Well, the, the process now, in this case, is, one, it has to be in our growth boundary.
Okay.
Two, it has to be touching the city limit.
Check, check.
In this case, it is.
Okay.
Three, it has to be owner requested.
Check.
Is, so they've, they've requested it, so that's where we're at now. Next, they have to give us a plan of services, which they have, goes before planning commission. They recommend, which I, I think they have with some conditions, the way I understand it.
Right.
I talked to one of the planning commissioners yesterday, that they've recommended with some conditional attributes to it, and that's kind of where we're at now.
Okay. Any other discussion, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stany.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Farrar.
Yes. Resolution passes on first reading. And on to resolution seven eighty-nine, which is the Villages at Heinz Creek Plan of Services, first reading.
Now, you only have one reading on this resolution, just one reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as I was, one, one reading on this one.
One reading on Plan of Services. The question has came up, is, and I think Alex and someone here to maybe answer the questions, and I think some of y'all have some questions concerning the, um, sewer grinder pumps. And I think Larry Clowers with ACWA spoke to me today, that they have some concerns with them. And Alex, maybe y'all can address, you know, what, what's been going on with it?
Well, Roger, see if we can get a motion, and we'll get a discussion. I think that's more appropriate.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, now we're in discussion. Would somebody like, Mr. McGrue, would you like to step to the mic and state your name and your address?
My name is Alex McGrue. Office address is three fifty-three Cullen Street, near Clinton. Uh, the engineer on this project. What we've got here is Anderson County Water Authority, along with CUB, as well, only have one pump system they allow, that's an E-one pump. What we're doing is we're proposing to give consumers a choice of another pump, which is a Keane pump. Keane pumps are able to push more, grind more, do more, they're bigger volume. So what we're proposing is putting multiple pumps in the system, but not just one per house. We'll have a maximum of four, minimum of two houses per pump. Thing about it is, though, is ACWA will take the main lines, just like it was any other subdivision, any other E-one pump system, doesn't matter. The main lines will be ACWAs. They've already agreed to that, they have no problem with it. What they don't want, is they don't want right now, is to take over our pump system. Because we have multiple homes per pump, they aren't willing to take that over yet. One, because they haven't done enough testing on the Keane pumps yet. We've got one in service, they're looking to put another one in their system to try them out. At some point, they may take it over, but at this time, they're not willing to say they will, because they don't know what these Keane pumps will do. We're hoping this will be a test project for them. The situation also was, has come up as to what will happen if the homeowner association, because right now, because we have more than one house per pump, we are proposing that the homeowner association maintain and take care of these pumps. It's part of their dues, their fees, they'll take care of the pumps, not ACWA, the homeowner association. They'll have someone hired to come in and take care of those pumps, if they have a problem, bring another pump in or whatever. The question was, what happens if the homeowner association goes away? So what we propose is putting into the homeowner association, as well as in their deeds, and what we're proposing to the state is, if the homeowner association goes away, then each of the houses connected to that pump become partially responsible for that pump. So if you have four houses on one pump, homeowner association, for whatever reason, dissolves, which, with this particular situation, I'm not sure how that could happen, but if it happened, then the four houses that were hooked to that one pump become four people responsible for one quarter interest of that pump and taking care of it. But we also want to put in there, for ACWA, to make them happy. If any person on that pump decides they don't want to be in the, you know, in with that pump together, they're more than welcome to get their own E-one pump and put it in, and Anderson County Water Authority will take over that pump and that pump on them. Somewhere down the line, they may take over the Keane pump, but just not right now.
Any questions for Mr. McGrue?
Well. Who would enforce, if you have four owners owning a pump, that got to that eventuality? How would the other three owners enforce if some person just said, "I'm not paying"?
To me, it's the same as having a shared driveway. You have shared maintenance of a driveway. One person doesn't pay, it becomes a civil matter. Just like we have, you have, you know, people that share driveways, and they, they share the, you know, the cost of maintaining that driveway, the same way with these pumps. And they always have the option to go put their own E-one pump in and hook it to the system. Anderson County Water Authority says, "No problem if they want to hook their own pump up to it and disconnect that one."
My, my biggest concern is, and I mean, I know that homeowners, I don't, I don't know how they work, but, but here's the scenario that I've played out in, in my mind, and it may not be a fair, valid scenario, but the pump does go bad. Uh, you have a, a city resident that flushes the toilet, tries to wash a load of clothes, something doesn't happen right, got problems, issues. Homeowners Association is, is intact, like it should be. They may or may not respond like they should, or it's not, you know, they can wash clothes, so whoever the overseer of the HOA is, but then the HOA, even in another scenario, goes away completely, and is not there, and there's no enforcement, then that patient, that customer is a citizen of the city of Clinton, and they can't flush a toilet or wash a load of clothes, they're gonna be out here on City Hall steps, wondering what the city's gonna do. I'm just concerned about an HOA. I mean, I guess my question is, and I'm, I'm sure it has to do with cost, but why even have an HOA for, for utilities like this? I mean, and, and again, maybe I don't know about what HOA is. I think more of an HOA is, who's gonna take care of the curb appeal? Who's gonna take care of the lighting? The utilities, in my opinion, seem, that, that's pretty important. And I mean, I understand the driveway, but it's one thing for your driveway to be washed out, but it's another thing not to be able to flush the toilet. And so, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I am concerned about that.
What, I don't know if this will answer your question or not, but same person has a problem where they won't, their toilet won't flush. If they call ACWA or CUB, CUB comes out and says, "Our lines are cleared." It's between the road and the house, that's on them. Same way as this, that pump will be, that is their service connection. So that pump, those four homes, if the HOA is gone, that pump is theirs. That's their service connection, just like the four-inch line that leaves your house and goes to the sewer line, that's on you. If you have a break in your water line between the meter and the house, that's on you. That becomes the service connection, and that's on the homeowners. So even if you have the HOA, and again, you, you hit it on the head, it's, it's money. The honest worst figured out way, we can provide sewer to sell these lots to the builders, to the homeowners, and have fifty percent or more less pumps, which at, what is it, you found it?
Oh, that's about four thousand dollars.
A pump, four thousand a pump. We've got a hundred and twenty-six lots. My mind's not working that great this evening, but let's just say, even at a hundred lot, you know, you don't have a lot of money when you half decide, half the amount of pumps you have to have, that's a lot of difference. And then what they're doing in this case, which is different than most subdivisions, and I've done quite a few around, most of them, they go and they put a stub out at the edge of the road, the builder has to come in and connect to that, whether it be pressure line, gravity line, doesn't matter. In this case, what they're selling them is a product where that lot's ready to go. You've got a pump right there, you no longer have to go down and connect to the main line, we've got your pump installed. The builder, the, you know, the builder doesn't have to go buy that pump for four thousand dollars. It's already on site, it's already been put in, it's a part of our development. We're doing it ahead of time, which saves all the builders, and all the people in there, a lot of money by not having to buy four thousand dollar pumps for every single house out there. So, being as, and the other side of that one was, is when we looked at this originally, we went to, we've talked to CUB, we've talked to ACWA, we've talked to other ones around, you have no choices, it's E-one or nothing, period. Which to us didn't seem quite right, when there are other pumps that are stronger, and we feel are as, as well-built, that you could put in there, but nobody would even consider them. So this is a way to be able to get them in, get the people in this area, an alternative pump to use.
Do you see ACWA coming on board anytime soon?
They're already on board with the main pressure line, but as far as the pumps.
Talking about giving us some sort of, you know, if, if the HOA fails, that they'll come in and take over the pumps? Is there, is there any?
I can't, I can't answer for ACWA, and I don't think they can answer until they've had a long enough, and I don't know what a test period they would be.
That was my next question.
I don't know if it's a six-month, one-year, two-year, I don't know. But being as we're about to put in over forty-five to fifty pumps or more in this system, I think it's the first place for them to look at for the next year or two, and say, "Hey, they haven't replaced any pumps," or "They've replaced one out of all these over four years, we've replaced ten E-ones. Maybe we need to look at this closer, and maybe start going to, to a different pump." Or at least give that choice. That's part of what this was about, was getting a choice for some of the owners, and it don't, and I'm not trying to sugarcoat it, it's about money too. It comes down to, what can we do to make these lots more desirable? And to make it cheaper on the builders to build these houses? And if that's four thousand dollar savings for every lot, you've got four on one pump, that's a thousand for those, they save a thousand.
Which, which is good, as long as everything works the way it's supposed to, and, and that's, that's.
Then, but that's every system. I mean, you can have a problem in any system, anywhere, and then I can design it exactly like you're supposed to and do everything right, doesn't mean you can't have a problem somewhere, something can go wrong.
That's true, but that's why it's important to decide who's gonna be responsible for it.
With her.
Now, now, I, as CUB board member, I'm probably a little more in tune to some of these issues than, than, than the city council. But at some point in time, it wasn't represented to me by ACWA officials, so let me be clear on that, but I, I was under the impression that they had approved this King pump, and now I'm being told they, they haven't approved it.
They have approved the King pump, I think. The confusion is, what they have not approved is taking over the system unless every single house had a single pump. They have accepted the King pump as an alternate option.
Okay, so they have accepted the pump, but not tying four houses to one pump?
No matter which we're doing it, yeah.
I believe that actually falls back to a state requirement, not.
Can you do, just for, for, I, I know who you are, but.
That falls back to a state requirement.
Can you tell us who, state your name for us, please?
J.D. King, um, my office is two Center Plaza.
Thank you.
That falls back to a state requirement, that a single pump is required on every single residential, uh, pump.
Well, I think that's a critical piece of information, that, that ACWA has approved the use of the pump.
Yes.
But not the current proposed configuration of using four houses to one pump.
Right, and this is a common thing that's done in a lot of developments. It's done really in coastal areas, not as much around here, because typically, everything can or in somewhat be gravity-fed. This particular subdivision sits down below where the pump station is, um, so we have to get it back up from the creek. We do not have a lot that is capable in this subdivision of gravity flowing. We did have the option of putting a single system in that would operate, uh, forty-two sixty houses at one time. We completely opted out of that one, thinking if that pump went down, we didn't want to have sixty people out, instead of potentially just four people or two people. The other thing that falls into this was, um, not only is it just the cost of the pump and the cost of, uh, the install, we also have a lot of rock in this subdivision. And that's a, something that's not been taken into the equation, so being required to be, you know, being required to have a pump at every one of these could not only have been the four hundred thousand dollars in pumps and install, we could have been looking at another three to four hundred thousand dollars in just rock blasting and rock removal for trenches. So, that has been another thing that we've thought of. The, to, the person that we have, we talked to three different companies. The people that would maintain our pumps would actually be one of the two or three companies that actually do ACWAs right now. So there would be an emergency phone number that would be given to each one of the homeowners. They make the same phone call instead of calling CUB. If you're a homeowner there, you call one of these three companies, and we're still negotiating that right now, but there would be a backup for each one of those. So the same person that comes, actually, and I believe fixes some of CUB's, I know they do all of ACWA's emergency service, would be the same person coming to fix this pump.
Vice Mayor, Zach, why does CUB not approve the?
It, because court, well, I'm gonna say, best of my recollection, um, it doesn't meet their specifications or their standards. Now, there's been criticisms of that, and I think some of it may be, um, maybe merit it. But I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but CUB, um, does not want to, to take over responsibility, or, uh, because it's not up to their standard, and that makes perfect sense to me. Um, we can argue about the standard, but it is what it is, and that's why they, you know, I think the route has been taken. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. And JD, you're free to rebuttal or offer.
We've spent, uh, multiple meetings talking about pumps. I've been to Ohio, I've been to Keane's, uh, manufacturing plant, I've actually also been to E-one's manufacturing plant. I can tell you more about pumps than you ever want to know.
You go up to them.
I think for CUB, they, they, they thank highly of the, the E-one pump. It's, it's proved, proven reliable, it's, they, and they know how to, to work with it, it's, it's their standard. And, and that's, that's their position. I think they've also said, if, if they, if it can be demonstrated that the King pump, um, is as good as or better than the E-one, that they would accept it. I don't know where we are in that process, don't want to go into that right now. Does that answer your question?
Will the city have any liability if everything goes south on the homeowners, the?
I don't know, possibly, I don't, I don't know, can't answer that.
See, that, that to me is.
That's to me, if you're going with the cheaper pump, that's.
It's the crux of the question.
You know, if council's uncomfortable, I mean, this is all, I had it brought to us just recently. It'd be my recommendation, if council's uncomfortable, I mean, it, annexation takes two readings. If council's uncomfortable, don't feel like they have enough information, we could always table the, the resolution for the Plan of Services to next month, so we could allow Alex and everybody to get more information, if y'all feel more comfortable.
Has the state approved?
It, we're in process of getting state approval for it now, but the, but just to clarify something here. The only reason the E-one pumps and the Keane pumps are all an issue is because CUB and ACWA have decided at some point to service those pumps at houses. They didn't have to, it's a service line. Anything inside the property line is considered a service line. At some point in time, though, CUB, and it's, I want to say one thing about their standards.
Sure.
Everything else we've got, as far as sewer goes, and water, for that fact, pretty much meets all their standards. The only thing it doesn't meet is the standards for the pump, which they only have one pump listed. So unless you have that one pump, you don't meet their standards. So, just, well, I wanted to clarify that, just, you know, so you think nothing out there met their standards, because it does. But, all these pumps, anything outside the line, because these utilities have decided to maintain pumps in other areas, nothing says they have to maintain any of these pumps. They have decided to. Anything else you have, like I say, gravity or water, anything past the clean-out toward the house, or anything past the water meter toward the house, is a service line, which is completely the homeowner's responsibility. In this case, we're giving them an out with the homeowner association. But there are things in every homeowner association, common areas, mowing, upkeep of a sign, all that stuff, is under a lot of homeowner associations all over the county and the city, all over East Tennessee. Where you could, if you want to make sure that, you know, if, if your question is every time that everyone goes in, what happens if it goes away? I don't think you would ever get a homeowner association ever approved, or subdivision approved with one. Who's gonna maintain the ponds, who's gonna maintain the pipes, who's gonna do the? If they go away, there's always something that's gonna fall on the homeowners of each individual lot.
But you'd agree.
You can't go into it assuming it's gonna fail.
And I agree, in, in, in principle, with your, with your point, but, but when you talk about the utilities, and you talk about the ability to flush your commode, or turn on your water, or something of that nature, reasonable people believe that that is the city's responsibility or the utility's responsibility.
And this, I want to point out, in this particular case, the city does not hold the responsibility of the water or sewer, either one.
But Clinton.
It's, you get your bill, though, every month from ACWA, and each person's going to pay their individual bill, sewer and water.
I, 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 I agree, but then there's the perception, and there's, there's the political perception of, that they're citizens, they are in the city limits, and why are they being treated differently? Why, why is CUB not servicing them, or why isn't certain services being provided to them? Because they're in the city, so there's gonna be a perception that's gonna be created when we annex it. Because I think from a reasonable person, that's not a lawyer, or it's not into development, they would think, "I'm buying a house, is it in the city limits?" So I'm gonna get fired, right? Yeah, who's gonna be provided by that? We are, and the city, right? And certain services are gonna be provided by the city. I think it, I think it flows reasonably and logically that someone's gonna think that the city's responsible, whether we are or not, and I want to be sure that everybody understands, and everybody's got complete understanding and, and full disclosure of what, what we're doing, what we're responsible for, and what we're not responsible for. Because in the unlikely scenario, it happens, but as an attorney, I deal with unlikely scenarios every day, or I wouldn't have a job. If the system fails, and we have two hundred families out here on our front steps with pitchforks and, and torches ready to, to go after that guy first, because he's bigger than me, but, um, you know, I want to be sure that we have answered all the questions, and I think that's all councils want to do. And the biggest question to me, before we go further, is what's the state's position? We don't know right now, right?
The state, the state.
I mean, is that fair?
Yes, but the pumps won't be a part of what the state approves.
But they're approving.
They're approving the pressure line, the sewer line, which is what ACWA will take over. That's what they're approving, that it will be a pressure system.
JD, if you, if you, if you don't mind.
They do not approve the actual, how do I say this? The layout, once it gets beyond the trunk lines. It's no different than if we did this subdivision and it was gravity-fed. If we went right down the backside of the property line, so that we could put multiple houses into one line, it would be the same thing, they would not look at that either. They do not look beyond the property line itself.
They look at the main trunk lines.
So they're not, the state's not approving the use of one pump for four lots?
We're private, this is just like they won't tell us what slope to put on our sewer line on a private, on, once you hit private property.
See, and I'll go back along, I echo you, give you a, give you an example, real live example. There have been, through my tenure here, there have been many, 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 many people that do not like Comcast. Uh, they don't like the service, they don't like the rates, they don't like a lot of things. I cannot tell you, I'm, I want to say probably, I'll say at least a dozen, fourteen times, people said, "When's the city gonna get somebody else besides Comcast?" Well, we don't govern that, am I right? But as a city resident, and as a city taxpayer, we've actually, if I'm not mistaken, we've had people come here to talk to us about cable and service.
I thought you might be the first person down here, too.
But, but see, we, the, the perception, just like you're talking about, cable and internet is, is important now, it's. is, is important now, it's, to especially younger people, it's as important as the sewer. They'd rather the internet work than the sewer, probably. But my point is, the average citizen and taxpayer of Clinton feels as though we have influence and, and input on utilities, whether we do or not. That's the perception.
This is also something that, if you go to Sevierville, Pidgin, Ford, or Gatlinburg right now, almost every one of the systems that are put in for any subdivision up there on the side of the mountain is not done by the utility company. It's actually a private development that's put in, just like this one. I mean, this is not anything new. This is a standard thing that HOA ends up with in multiple, multiple situations. I think it's just new for this area.
My, my biggest thing is the HOA. If the HOA goes south, that's, that's, it's not fixing the pump, it's not getting it fixed, but, you know, that's my biggest thing. Will the pump work? Will it have to be repaired? Can one pump do four houses? All that, I leave that up to the folks that know it. But my, my issue is, is that, and, and again, you've gotta understand, we had a development, not in the city of Clinton, thank goodness, but I've heard horror stories out of another development up in the Andersonville area, and it didn't go good, and it's not good, and it went south, and I can't help but have that taste in my mouth.
Okay. I live in Andersonville, I have many friends that actually live in the subdivision, and I'm on both sides of that argument. That HOA was dissolved at the residents' request. Okay? Now, if that development had this system in it, they know, paying their dues, when they move in, they'd have known, HOA fixes your pumps. HOA maintains the pumps. That, they know it when they go in there. It's a part of it, it's part of the HOA, it's a part of the selling that we, you know, that actually wants them to go there, 'cause they've got a group there looking out for their bad trenches. When they dissolve it, that, that, now this, in Andersonville, this was at their bequest, they ask to dissolve it, so they're asking not to be maintaining that pump, knowing that's a consequence of it. But, if we have it in their deed and everything, that if the HOA fails, that the four houses, or two houses, or three houses, whatever we've got hooked to one pump, they become responsible for that pump. It's a joint pump between those owners only. Then those four people are responsible. Now, again, at any given time, ACWA's gonna say, "Nope, you have to use that pump." If they wanna come and put their own pump and hook to the line, they're more than welcome to it. As far as who's got it, ACW or CUB, the other option is, we finish it out, sell lots, and then see, you know, Clinton can try to annex it then, and if they wanna get, CUB wants to take it over once it's annexed.
CUB's not gonna take it over. I can just...
Regardless, if CUB won't take it over, the perception that CUB should be providing this is a mute point. It's, it's, your water or your sewer is provided by a particular utility, in this case, happens to be ACWA. Not city of Clinton, not CUB, ACWA. And they're willing to take on the trunk lines. Homeowner Association is willing to put in the pumps and do, actually, the developers are willing to put the pumps in for the people, rather than go buy their own, and put this in there, and give them a, you know, a pump on site. So, perceptions run everywhere. You know, same ones that think, "Y'all provide cable," some other ones think that y'all control the airwaves. You know, everybody's gonna think the city does something different. In this case, though, we're talking about having the homeowners association take care of it. If that fails, those four owners will become responsible. We can write it in their deeds, we can write it in the homeowners association, we can write all that information in there. And again, it becomes just like a joint driveway.
Alex, I, for me personally, I, I'm in favor of your sub, of the subdivision. I've been in favor of Nikki's vision since I first learned about it, and I really applaud Nikki's efforts, and her work, and, and JD, and all, you know, yourself. It's what a lot of us on council have been asking for. You know, we'd like to see residential development, we'd like to, I mean, Jim would love to have 200 new families buying drugs and, and pharmaceuticals.
Prescription.
Prescription, yeah. So, it's, it's, you know, this is in our best interest, but what I think, what I want to really be sure that we understand is, what is the city's obligation? What do we, you know, 'cause I hear you, and, and I, when you talk about, we're gonna write it into their deeds, and I would like someone to weigh in and tell me, other than, than me making the decision right now in the next 15 minutes, how, how effective is that? What type of protection that, that gives the city? I mean, it could be just as simple as a legal opinion, "Yep, Zach, you're, you're good to go," that, that's, that ties the hands, and I think that would go a long way to easing councils, if they have apprehension, they may not. I'd also like to get the state's verdict on what they're, what they're, what, what we're waiting on? I mean, are we not waiting to hear from some...
The state's not waiting on pumps, and we're just, we were trying to make sure we had anything.
But we're waiting on something, wait, wait a second.
We're waiting on approval for the trunk line.
Waiting on something. I heard approval in state, and we don't have it yet. Is that correct? Is that part correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Let me explain something now.
Is it not germane to get that approval before we go running out there saying, "Yes"? There is a, there is a question that's been posi, that's been positioned in, to the state government, and we don't have that answer yet.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me back it up a second. We're getting into this discussion about a subdivision that's not been finally approved, whether it be city, county, whatever. If we brought you this piece of property as a whole, would you ask the question?
Is the state approved it?
Yeah.
This, I, I'm...
What I'm saying is, we're not at that point yet. We've done preliminary plat approval.
Right.
State approval has to be done before installation, before final approval of the plat. So you have things, you guys are asking questions, and we have done a lot of this, we've gotten the water approved, we've gotten the postal position for the postal boxes approved, we've got a T-DOT crossing approved. We've got a lot of things approved here. We don't have it all, but we're not to that point yet. You know, you're asking for approval on things that we are in the process of getting, but we haven't gotten to the point of installation or final plat approval. So, you're asking for things that we're not, we're in the process of doing, but we're not there yet. With any process of any subdivision, we bring in design, show them to the city for preliminary plat approval. Once they approve the setup and how it goes, then we proceed to get approval from the state for whatever it is, T-DET, T-DOT, whoever, and the utilities. So, you're asking for approvals and, and saying, "You wanna see these things first," but we're, we're really kind of in the process of, but we're not there yet. And the reason we came to the city at this particular point in the process was to not slow us down in getting it done, even though, 'cause we want it in the city in the final phase. We wanna get final approval through the city and have this in the city, to bring these lots and all this tax...
So, so what you're telling me is, we, you need the city to take a position on this before, before the state?
No.
And it's gonna affect the timing of something?
I'm just saying, we would like to get it in so it doesn't slow us down. I'm not saying that...
How would, how would us taking, how would us taking a 30-day pause slow you down? And JD, please, if you, feel free, feel free, either, either one of you can jump up. JD's looking at me like he's ready to pounce, so I didn't mean to interrupt you.
The 30 days technically is not going to affect us, as long as this doesn't go beyond the next 30 days. Because we are quickly approaching a point in time where we'd like to start selling lots. Well, this has already been approved through the county. We're good with the county. If we don't need to do this, we've got to start selling lots towards the first of the year. So now, we're gonna stretch here, the next meeting's, what, first December, somewhere in there, would be the next one?
November.
November. So we get the approval. If this went and stretched beyond there, it would be impossible for us to start selling lots at the first of the year. The other portion that plays into this is, we don't know, part of what's, I'm giving Alex such a headache over, is some of this is still a moving target. The actual ground level and what's on the ground is dictating where some of these pressure mains have to go, and the way we have to adjust them. Well, he can't present a plan necessarily either, until I tell him, this is the way we've got to run this. Now, you know, I do wanna go back to his point, was if we brought this piece of property, and we didn't really, we had a layout, but we never showed any of the sewer stuff, we would've just showed our trunk lines, would this have ever been a discussion right now? And would it have ever made it to that point? Because this is not a city of Clinton, a CUB, for their review, for their approval, this has nothing to do with the local utility company. So we can't get the state approval, I guess, I'll go back to that point, until we know exactly where things are going, and we lay that out. And that's part of what this process is going. We can't sell the first lot, though, until we have you all on board, because I don't think anybody here wants to come in after the fact and try to amend each one of these lots individually. It, it just would be a nightmare.
We still have final plat approval to go through, too.
Yep.
Roger.
JD, a couple things. You said 30 days will hold you up. I think if, if we could table it, one, that you all educate council a little better on what's going on, would help, one issue.
Two, I think Councilman Bryan, Councilman Harold's question on liability, we could ask them to ask that question on more, because, because we have, have only, I think, merit a point, maybe, I don't know if we have any other homeowner associations in the city that we really...
Is there, okay, going to that example, HOA, is their sewer part of their HOA there?
No. And I don't even know how active theirs is, I've really never dealt with it. We could ask some of the liability questions with them, tasked attorneys, to maybe ease your all's mind, are we liable, if worst-case scenario did happen, and maybe get some legal answers by the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
Then if it would ease your all's mind on how to proceed with this.
I think that's a good idea, and I make that motion.
Would, would we offer, would it help if we offered up to do a lunch and learn and bring in maybe one or two attorneys from two different places that specialize in the writing of these HOAs?
And is Phil Price still a city attorney? Does he do...
Yeah, if, if, we have to watch on our sunshine law, it would have to be an open meeting.
That's what I mean, an open meeting, anybody can come.
We want, the city council, the city council want to have a, a workshop in the next two to three weeks before our next meeting?
We could do that, we don't have to set the date tonight. I mean, we can get with, I mean, Alex, I mean, Alex does work for us, too, we can try to get together. I mean, we've, we've met a couple times with Alex on this, he was in my office at 7:10 one morning, talking about this, trying to figure it out, so we can...
Well, I wanted it to be said, I'm, I'm not against it, I wanna make it work. But, but when two, when we have CUB and ACWA, two different utility companies coming, and they've got good, bad, right or wrong, honorary, contrary, good to work with, not good to work, whatever, when they have red, or concerns, I can't help but feel a little concerned. Now, if the HOA works like it's supposed to, then we'll, every bit of this conversation is in vain.
And I would be happy to offer up our attorney, who is actually the attorney's company that wrote my HOA, that was a local builder from Clinton, who went belly up, and my HOA still functions absolutely perfectly fine without him. We ended up taking it over as a group, we pay our dues, I've had problems with my water and sewer, I've had to pay for them to do it from the street end, I think that's just what it is, and I would, that's who we're using to do our HOA.
Well, I, I would leave that up to you, Roger, to...
Do y'all have a draft of this one, already rolled up, the HOA?
We've been working on it. It's, part of the problem is, is making sure that it covers everything that you all are uncomfortable with. I wanna make sure all the wording is in there to make you all comfortable.
Yeah, do we have enough information you feel like we can, okay?
And that's, that's another one of those things that, that you do between preliminary and final, that we're still in the process of doing. We're, like I said, we're kinda midstream here in a lot of this stuff, but we're trying to do it through the annexation as well, midstream, so that you guys don't have to deal with individual lot owners, for one, but two, that we know that it's all done and in the city. You know, but this is the time to do it, so that we're not held up later on.
Yeah.
Or, you know...
I will do, I will do, as myself, me individually, I'll do whatever I can between now and next meeting, to do my part, if that means a second meeting.
So, so let's, let's step back here and, and take this, so there was a motion and a second on Resolution 789. There was a discussion, out of that discussion, there was a motion to table it. Was there a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
So there was a motion and a second to table to the following...
Meeting.
Meeting. And then, the plan is, we're gonna have a workshop...
Get some information.
City manager is going to, to work with JD and Alex to get, secure us a date, secure us, and it's gonna be up to city manager and, and Hollinsworth to provide who they think is important to be there. If, if you think somebody's important to be there, that we need to hear from, then, then they're welcome to speak to us. And the purpose of this is to clear up any misunderstandings, everybody understands legal liabilities, and, and gets really good and comfortable with, with supporting, 'cause I believe the support, I support it fully. I just wanna make sure that the duties that I owe the citizens are, are making sure that I'm maintaining that duty to them as well. Anybody else have anything further?
So I got a question. If you put a pump at every household, the resident is liable for that pump if it goes out. Is that correct?
No. Because ACWA, CUB have chosen to maintain the pumps for their clients, for their customers. That's something they chose to do, they didn't have to. Because it's beyond the property line, they could've said, you know, "If you wanna hook for gravity system, you have to buy a pump." But CUB and ACW have decided to do that. So, no, the, the utility companies would come in and fix it. I don't know as far as their billing, I don't know if they charge more for these long pumps, or those who aren't. I don't know, I don't, I don't do their billing, I don't go, I don't have one, so I don't have to pay that.
Okay.
So, but in this case, are, you know, part of the good thing about it is, if a pump goes out, homeowners association, you got less of them, you got more people sharing that cost, so the cost to replace one, you also have for all these people. You know, doesn't mean they can't put it, you know, maybe go back to an E1 pump or their one house, and there is, you know, ACW can come take care of it? That is an option, but they don't have to go buy that pump and have it in danger or involved or whatever.
Does that answer your question, Councilman? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Or do we do a roll call that? Okay. All right, so that motion's been tabled, we're gonna have us a workshop, and any old business before us?
I got a question. The CAC money, community action money that we gave several months ago, is that what that was, where we and the county and the city went together?
Yeah, Ethra's gonna take 'em over, that one.
Yeah, did we ever find anything out about that? Where's that money, and anything new on that, or how can we find out, or will we ever find out, or...
I sent an email back last time it was questioned, but the director then was in the hospital, and I had not gotten a reply on that yet. My understanding that the IRS is still looking into it, and have not waived any of the...
Have they cashed the check? Door. Okay.
The last I heard, the IRS was, they were still waiting on the IRS.
Okay.
Any other?
New business.
Any new business? If there's not any old business or any new business, other than the fact that I expect, Roger, anything that we can do to keep magnet mills in compliance and moving forward?
Just the last report that Jason Stokes had from them, they have slowed down just a little bit, 'cause they have filled their current landfill they've been using up, and they're working on to secure a second spot, to start hauling stuff off, too, which they don't like much more. So hopefully, they'll resume here within the next week or two.
Thank you.